Testing, testing. This is it. You can do it. Thank you. Ms. Ganey. So we're going to start with the May work session of the Harnett County Board of Education to order. I'd like to begin with an invocation. And Ms. Ganey, would you lead us in prayer this morning, please? If everyone will please stand and after which remain standing for the pledge.
Dear precious Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for the opportunity to worship and to serve you through Harnett County Schools. We ask that you just bless our meeting today. Help us to make decisions that are in the best interest of the students, the faculty, and the staff. As the children leave to go on summer break, we ask that you protect them, keep them safe. Don't let any hurt, harm, or danger come upon them. This is my prayer in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Ganey. And I'd now like to ask Mr. Hayer if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
We have a motion and a second, so further discussion. Hearing none, the chairman votes aye.
Abate aye.
Hearing no nay votes, the motion carries and the agenda is approved as presented. All right, we first start off this morning, have a very special presentation, and we have several of our students graduating seniors that were recipients of the State Employees' Credit Union Scholarship. And this is indeed a great honor, and so I'll recognize Mr. White at this time to make these presentations.
Thank you, Chairman Powell and members of the board. This morning, I'd like to ask Mrs. Natalie McCurley, who's one of our Student Support Services coordinators, to come forward and introduce the students and their families who received the State Employees Credit Union Scholarship this year. Ms. McCurley.
Good morning, everyone. We are very fortunate in our district that we are allotted five scholarships through the State Employees Credit Union Foundation that allows these students to receive $10,000 towards their college education. This is a great honor, and they are among many who were selected from some highly qualified candidates and some of the quite wonderful students we have in our district. And each school gets one choice, and then they have one additional one as kind of our bonus scholarship. So I'll start at the top of our list and kind of go through the ways. We have from Triton High School, Palmer Falster. And from, oh, excuse me, Harnett Central High School, we have Lauren Godfrey. And then from Western Harnett High School, we have Irish Delgado. And Over Hills High School, we have Jalen Bird. And our fifth scholarship comes from Triton High School, also Ireland Hall. We appreciate all the wonderful things that these students have done for themselves, for their communities, and for their schools. They were also chosen as folks who have given back to their communities and to their schools. So we appreciate all of their efforts. Thank you, and to their families as well for being here today.
Thank you, Mrs. McCurley. I'd like to ask the parents of all of our scholarship recipients to stand as well. We thank you for rearing such wonderful children. Thank you so much. And at this time, through those door doors, you all will exit to take a quick picture for social media, you know, because we love those things, with parents and students. And again, we appreciate you being a part of our board meeting this morning. Thank you.
Okay, what a great honor, and congratulations to the recipients on this award, and also for the hard work that led to this award. So congratulations. Well, now I'll return to Mr. White for a principal presentation on yonder pouches.
Chairman Powell, I'm sorry, Chairman Powell and members of the board, once again, thank you again for the opportunity to be able to present about yonder. This week, we have declared in Harnett County Schools Yonder Week. And so what you will see is letters going home to families of rising sixth graders and rising ninth graders, as well as students in our current middle schools and high schools, to let them know that we will have yonder pouches in all of our middle and high schools next year. So we want to be proactive with that and have those discussions with families now so that they can prepare throughout the summer. Also during the summer, we'll have four beyond-the-classroom sessions to discuss yonder pouches and any other issues that families may necessarily want to discuss before the school year begins. The first of those will be, I believe it's May the 30th, and we'll do that virtually, and we'll have that posted on social media for families to be able to attend. And then we'll do two in-person sessions as well to be able to discuss those with the community. And so we're excited about it. We're getting a lot of buzz regarding it. And so we invited the principals of our pilot schools this morning to speak briefly about the effect of yonder pouches in their buildings. And so in order, I'd like for Ms. Dawn Young to come first. Behind Mrs. Young will be Mrs. Britton Sullivan, and behind Mrs. Sullivan will be Mr. Ryan McNeil bringing up the anchor. And so, Ms. Young, if you will prepare yourself to come forward and discuss the impact of yonder pouches in your building this school year.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It was indeed a pleasure to be one of the pilot schools for the implementation of our yonder pouches at Star Academy. So we sent out the initial information about yonder by front-loading parents and students with it in the form of emails, voice text messages, that sort of thing. We sent these out in January, around the 7th and the 25th, and the full implementation was made at Star on February 7th. When we say fully implemented, that was the delivery and the actual putting them in the hands of students. And it was a very smooth transition into using them. The students had prior experience or exposure to the use of the yonder pouches at other places, and then they already went and looked them up on the, they Googled it. So they already had an idea of what to do with them. And during our family intakes, we would also introduce the use of yonder pouches to the parents. That way, they could see and understand that their students still had access to their phones, they just couldn't actually take them out of the pouches. But the assurance that they were able to contact their student, or the student could contact them using our office telephone took all anxiety out of their situations. And then for our future use going into our next school year, I think our current handling and use of the yonder pouches are still going to be effective in keeping down the distractions that, as you see in our data, we started in January tracking how many referrals we had through educator handbook of our cellphone referrals. And they started out with 32, 31. And as you see in the data, that we had a significant decrease just off of the conversation of having these pouches in place. And then, as you see, it went down even more so in March, where we had even another 50% reduction in the use of the yonder pouches. And that was with full implementation going on February 7th. And then in April, which is usually our highest enrollment period, as you see, the yonder pouch is still in place, but they were still able to be effective in keeping our referrals, total referrals for the month to eight. And right now, here we are heading toward the end of May, and we're only sitting on two. So for us at our school with the students, the yonder pouches are very effective. What I'd like to show to you are some of our teacher and staff testimonials. I'll let you read over those. But as a staff, 100%, they were all for it when I introduced it. They liked the idea of not having to compete against the cellphone for the attention of their students. They enjoyed the opportunity not to have to have that conversation repeatedly in class. Put your phone away, put your phone away, put your phone away. It made a very big difference in how much engagement they were able to have with the students, and the students were being very productive. And again, parent pushback, very minimal, probably none, to be honest with you. But again, the reassurance of you always have contact with your student, and to remind them back in our day, when we didn't have cellphones, where would you go to get to contact your parent? You go down to the office by asking permission. So they, it really does work well. The parents are also in agreement that cellphones are a huge distraction, and so they were all for it. Are there any questions?
Mr. White, do you think we could sell some of these testimonials back to yonder for advertising purposes?
Absolutely, we can. Figure out a way to at least promote kind of the good work that our principals are doing with this. We've been approached by yonder a couple of times, and there are a lot of school districts across the country that have implemented this. And maybe it's because we pay them, but they do come back and tell us that we're one of the better school districts from an implementation perspective that they brought on board in the last six or so months because of our strategic way of rolling this out. And so we do appreciate them for acknowledging us and doing that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I was like, please don't make me have to do this on my own here. So we are Highland Middle School, and we have about 750 students. And we started off the implementation the same way. We actually all planned together, rolled it out the same time period. So it didn't start at one school, and then, you know, they complained about it there, and then the next. So we set our implementation dates to be very strategic in making sure our parents had the information. We had time to meet with our students. So in our building, HCS Talks is apparently what started it. So everybody got their information from there. But we met with each of our grade levels, and we talked about the impact of social media and how they felt about phones impacting them in school. And most of them, we talked about the data analytics, and, you know, if I were on TikTok, it's not going to look the same as your TikTok because our interests are different. And so we talked about how social media tends to feed into some of the things that may not be academic. So during the school day, and how the purpose of social media was to draw you in. Our students are very, very addicted to their phones for everything. And I will say, in going through this, so are their parents in the idea that they want to access their student whenever they want, however they want. And that has been some of the issues that I've addressed with parents. But our implementation was in meeting with our students. They understood the need for it. They didn't like it, but they understood the need for it. And then what we did was we passed out the pouches to our teachers. We had numbered each one, and so they were assigned out to students in case somebody lost theirs, we could return it if somebody tried to take someone else's because they lost theirs. So we had an accountability piece to those pouches as well. As far as the parent concerns, one of the things that we did hear a lot from is, my student doesn't have a cellphone. And a lot from our sixth grade, they don't have a cellphone, they don't need a cellphone, or they may have one, but we don't send it to school with them. So one of the things that we did is we kind of created a piece that was kind of in between. We did create a parent letter that we sent home that stated that their child does not bring a cellphone to school. The parent signed it, the student signed it, and they turned it in. Once they turned it in, we actually issued them a pass from the school, and that's what they used in the morning. So they either had to show us their pouch or their pass. So that had another accountability piece to it. If they had this signed agreement and they were found with a cellphone, the pass was taken back and a pouch was issued. And so this kind of became null and void at that point. So we were trying to listen and respond to some of the parent concerns with that. The other thing that came up a lot, it just in the conversations on HCS Talks, was emergencies. If there was a school shooting, if there was this, I'm not going to be able to get a hold of my child and all of this. And my initial response is, we don't want you involved if there's an emergency at school, to be quite honest. The last thing we need are, you know, 50 parents running up to the school when we're trying to deal with this situation. However, we have assured them, all of my grade level teachers in each hallway have a, have an unlocking unit that can be passed around as needed. So there are mobile unlocking stations that they have. Any student is able to use a classroom phone if they needed to contact a parent. We also have a student phone that is in our front office as well. So they always have access to a phone. So taking that away is not the issue. Usually, it was the parent wanting to text and check in with their kid, or the kid going to the bathroom and saying, I want to go home because I feel sick, or, and so that's where a lot of that communication that they lost, that they did not like, was that direct communication. But all of that could be taken care of through the front office and the classroom. And then the last issue that tended to come up was students with medical issues. So we do have students who are diabetic, and they monitor their glucose levels through their cellphones. There are special yonder pouches that are Velcro that they use. So they are able to actually access their phones throughout the day, but if peeling it open, you can hear it. And so that is how we accommodate those students that have medical issues, and the parents are completely fine with that. Really, as far as direct issues with parents, I think I maybe talked to three directly. There was a lot of talk, and, you know, kids will be like, well, my parents said this. And I said, but in our building, this is what we're doing. But directly, I think I had three parents that I spoke to, and after I spoke with them, they were completely fine with everything. I did send out a survey to our teachers just to kind of get their thoughts and feedback because they're the ones on the front lines. And honestly, it was anonymous. They did not have to put a name to it or attach their email so that they would be able to be completely honest. And when we got those results, this was, oops, sorry. I think I wanted to delay here. Try it again. All right. So the first question was, prior to adopting the yonder pouches, approximately how many incidents per week did you address? That involves cellphones, headphones, AirPods, et cetera, any sort of personal technology. And the results there are fairly split, and these were all of my teachers. So this included elective teachers, our core teachers, media coordinator, IT, so this was our entire staff. So you can see it's kind of split, and it's probably going to be conditional onto where you work with those students. After adopting the yonder pouches, the question was approximately how many incidents per week? That involves cellphones, headphones, AirPods, et cetera, any sort of personal technology. And the results there are fairly split, and these were all of my teachers. So this included elective teachers, our core teachers, media coordinator, IT, so this was our entire staff. So you can see it's kind of split, and it's probably going to be conditional onto where you work with those students. After adopting the yonder pouches, the question was approximately how many incidents per week? That involves cellphones, headphones, AirPods, et cetera, any sort of personal technology. And the results there are fairly split, and these were all of my teachers. So this included elective teachers, our core teachers, media coordinator, IT, so this was our entire staff. So you can see it's kind of split, and it's probably going to be conditional onto where you work with those students. After adopting the yonder pouches, the question was approximately how many incidents per week? That involves cellphones, headphones, AirPods, et cetera, any sort of personal technology. And the results there are fairly split, and these were all of my teachers. So this included elective teachers, our core teachers, media coordinator, IT, so this was our entire staff. So you can see it's kind of split, and it's probably going to be conditional onto where you work with those students. After adopting the yonder pouches, the question was approximately how many incidents per week? That involves cellphones, headphones, AirPods, et cetera, any sort of personal technology. And the results there are fairly split, and these were all of my teachers. So this included elective teachers, our core teachers, media coordinator, IT, so this was our entire staff. So you can see it's kind of split, and it's probably going to be conditional onto where you work with those students. After adopting the yonder pouches, the question was approximately how many incidents per week? That involves cellphones, headphones, AirPods, et cetera, any sort of personal technology. And the results there are fairly split, and these were all of my teachers. So this included elective teachers, our core teachers, media coordinator, IT, so this was our entire staff. So you can see it's kind of split, and it's probably going to be conditional onto where you work with those students. After adopting the yonder pouches, the question was approximately how many incidents per week?
Our data, we started in January tracking how many referrals we had through educator handbook of our cellphone referrals. And they started out with thirty-two, thirty-one. And as you see in the data that we had a significant decrease just off of the conversation of having these pouches in place. And then, as you see, it went down even more so in March, where we had even another fifty percent reduction in the use of the yonder pouches. And that was with full implementation going on February seventh. And then in April, which is usually our highest enrollment period, as you see, the yonder pouch is still in place, but they were still able to be effective in keeping our referrals, total referrals for the month to eight. And right now, here we are heading toward the end of May, and we're only sitting on two. So for us at our school with the students, the yonder pouches are very effective. What I'd like to show to you are some of our teacher and staff testimonials. I'll let you read over those. But as a staff, one hundred percent, they were all for it when I introduced it. They liked the idea of not having to compete against the cellphone for the attention of their students. They enjoyed the opportunity not to have to have that conversation repeatedly in class. Put your phone away, put your phone away, put your phone away. It made a very big difference in how much engagement they were able to have with the students. And the students were being very productive. And again, parent pushback, very minimal, probably none, to be honest with you. But again, the reassurance of you always have contact with your student. And to remind them back in our day, when we didn't have cellphones, where would you go to get to contact your parent? You go down to the office by asking permission. So they, it really does work well. The parents are also in agreement that cellphones are a huge distraction, and so they were all for it. Are there any questions?
Mr. White, do you think we could sell some of these testimonials back to Yonder for advertising purposes?
Absolutely, we can. Figure out a way to at least promote kind of the good work that our principals are doing with this. We've been approached by Yonder a couple of times, and there are a lot of school districts across the country that have implemented this. And maybe it's because we pay them, but they do come back and tell us that we're one of the better school districts from an implementation perspective that they brought on board in the last six or so months because of our strategic way of rolling this out. And so we do appreciate them for acknowledging us and doing that.
All right. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Did she, oh, yeah, okay, good. I was like, please don't make me have to do this on my own here. So we are Highland Middle School, and we have about seven hundred and fifty students. And we started off the implementation the same way. We actually all planned together, rolled it out the same time period. So it didn't start at one school, and then, you know, they complained about it there, and then the next. So we set our implementation dates to be very strategic in making sure our parents had the information. We had time to meet with our students. So in our building, HCS Talks is apparently what started it. So everybody got their information from there. But we met with each of our grade levels, and we talked about the impact of social media and how they felt about phones impacting them in school. And most of them, we talked about the data analytics, and, you know, if I were on TikTok, it's not going to look the same as your TikTok because our interests are different. And so we talked about how social media tends to feed into some of the things that may not be academic. So during the school day, and how the purpose of social media was to draw you in. Our students are very, very addicted to their phones for everything. And I will say, in going through this, so are their parents in the idea that they want to access their student whenever they want, however they want. And that has been some of the issues that I've addressed with parents. But our implementation was in meeting with our students. They understood the need for it. They didn't like it, but they understood the need for it. And then what we did was, we passed out the pouches to our teachers. We had numbered each one, and so they were assigned out to students in case somebody lost theirs, we could return it. If somebody tried to take someone else's because they lost theirs. So we had an accountability piece to those pouches as well. As far as the parent concerns, one of the things that we did hear a lot from is, my student doesn't have a cellphone. And a lot from our sixth grade, they don't have a cellphone, they don't need a cellphone, we don't, or they may have one, but we don't send it to school with them. So one of the things that we did is, we kind of created a piece that was kind of in between. We did create a parent letter that we sent home that stated that their child does not bring a cellphone to school. The parent signed it, the student signed it, and they turned it in. Once they turned it in, we actually issued them a pass from the school, and that's what they used in the morning. So they either had to show us their pouch or their pass. So that had another accountability piece to it. If they had this signed agreement and they were found with a cellphone, the pass was taken back and a pouch was issued. And so this kind of became null and void at that point. So we were trying to listen and respond to some of the parent concerns with that. The other thing that came up a lot, it just in the conversations on HCS Talks, was emergencies. If there was a school shooting, if there was this, I'm not going to be able to get a hold of my child and all of this. And my initial response is, we don't want you involved if there's an emergency at school, to be quite honest. The last thing we need are, you know, fifty parents running up to the school when we're trying to deal with this situation. However, we have assured them, all of my grade level teachers in each hallway have a, have an unlocking unit that can be passed around as needed. So there are mobile unlocking stations that they have. Any student is able to use a classroom phone if they needed to contact a parent. We also have a student phone that is in our front office as well. So they always have access to a phone. So taking that away is not the issue. Usually, it was the parent wanting to text and check in with their kid, or the kid going to the bathroom and saying, I want to go home because I feel sick, or, and so that's where a lot of that communication that they lost, that they did not like, was that direct communication. But all of that could be taken care of through the front office and the classroom. And then the last issue that tended to come up was students with medical issues. So we do have students who are diabetic, and they monitor their glucose levels through their cellphones. There are special yonder pouches that are Velcro that they use. So they are able to actually access their phones throughout the day, but if peeling it open, you can hear it. And so that is how we accommodate those students that have medical issues, and the parents are completely fine with that. Really, as far as direct issues with parents, I think I maybe talked to three directly. There was a lot of talk, and, you know, kids will be like, well, my parents said this. And I said, but in our building, this is what we're doing. But directly, I think I had three parents that I spoke to. And after I spoke with them, they were completely fine with everything. I did send out a survey to our teachers just to kind of get their thoughts and feedback, because they're the ones on the front lines. And honestly, it was anonymous. They did not have to put a name to it or attach their email so that they would be able to be completely honest. And when we got those results, this was, oops, sorry. I think I wanted to delay here. Try it again. All right. So the first question was, prior to adopting the yonder pouches, approximately how many incidents per week did you address? That involves cellphones, headphones, AirPods, et cetera, any sort of personal technology. And the results there are fairly split, and these were all of my teachers. So this included elective teachers, our core teachers, media coordinator, IT, so this was our entire staff. So you can see, it's kind of split, and it's probably going to be conditional onto where you work with those students. After adopting the yonder pouches, the question was approximately how many incidents per week. And we had, obviously, a huge increase of none. We did not have to deal with those issues. And then, obviously, we didn't have any that were more than three incidents. And then, overall, how did they feel? Sorry. This is not my thing here. Overall, how did you feel that the use of the yonder pouches have impacted your classroom? And eighty-seven percent felt that it had a positive, a positive impact in their classroom. And the thirteen percent there, I could probably tell you where those came from, but these were, again, some of the comments. I had a place that they could leave any comment that they wanted about how they felt about it. And these are just some of the comments that they had regarding it. And most of it was that they just felt it took away the distraction, even having to address it with students. Put your phone away, put your phone away. They're hiding it under their desk. They're over there texting in the corner. They're, you know, is, what is that in your pocket? You know, those types of things that it completely eliminated those pieces. And I also did a, just with some of our students, I did a survey with them, which was interesting. These are my positives. These are my negatives as far as the comments. So it's about fifty-fifty. And it was funny, one of the students' comments was, I think there's, there is less distractions because our phones are in a jail. So I thought that was, that was an interesting, interesting comment from them. But my direct observations is that we really have had no issues with social media stemming from in-school. All of the issues we've had to deal with involve outside of school, after hours, you know, their Instagram chats, all of these things, but none of them have been in our building. We've had no videos of fights, conflicts, pictures being taken of students. Every school, if you look on social media, has a fight page, a sleep page, you know, a making fun of student page. And we have not had any of those issues come up this year. And the other, the biggest thing is that there's just no argument about the consequence. So if a student is found with a phone, they know, here's the consequence, here's your letter, they have a day of ISS, and we're done, and we move on. And they know what that is. So there isn't that back and forth, what do you mean? I didn't do this. They know that the expectation was to have the phone in the pouch. And so it has eliminated any of that, those issues. I feel like I hit, there we go. The benefits overall was that, again, there's a clear expectation of engagement. That technology is meant for learning, and the social media and the social aspect of it has no place during the school day. It has had a decrease issues, again, impacting the online bullying, the social media issues, the texting, the meeting in the bathroom, the TikTok videos. And again, it just comes down to, we are here to learn. That's why we're in this building, and so we're going to do everything to help you with that. And again, just some things as far as, as we're rolling it out to the middle and high schools countywide, is that the messages I would send to those principals is, if you're going to implement these pouches, it has to be done with fidelity. If you are doing it just because you're told to do it, it's not going to have the impact that it should if you're not going to follow through with the purpose and the reason for using the yonder pouches. It then becomes a waste of time, and it becomes a waste of money for our county. And so I think that parents need to know consistently whether your child is at the middle or the high school, that the expectation is the same. They will try to circumvent the system. They will try to open it. They will try to put a burner phone in their pouch and keep their real phone in their backpack. They do all that. And honestly, I've told Mr. White this, I don't care if they do that, as long as I don't see their phone during the school day. And so in the end, that's what the benefit is, is that they are, they are learning and that they are not doing the other things that they shouldn't be doing. So with that, I think, are there any questions? I think that's my last slide. It'll be about five sec, there we go. All right. Do you have any questions? I would say that it's been a great tool for our school, and we have greatly appreciated being able to pilot that. So, thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing us the time to speak with you. I appreciate that. I am a huge proponent of this. I think what everybody needs to understand about this, the yonder pouches, it didn't change what our school policy was, but it was a tool, a resource that allowed teachers to be able to implement the policy that we had with fidelity. And I think that's how we need to see this moving forward. When you've got thirteen hundred kids in a building, it's very hard to kind of implement those things, I'm on that delay, when you don't have that proper tool or resource. And so this is one of those things for me where it is, it has from day one changed our school for the better. Staff responses, there has not been a negative comment from any staff member. Every time that I talk to the staff, it immediately is, I got my classroom back. I don't have to worry about figuring out, you know, who's on the phone, who's not. I don't have to tell them to take the phone or put the phone up. What we did at the, at the high school level is, if a teacher saw a phone, they would Google chat us, they would email us, let us know who it was. Administration would go in, we'd ask for the phone, they'd give us the phone, and then we'd take it to the office. It stays in the office for the rest of the day. And then, per our policy that was already in place, one time, you get it back. Two times and after, parent has to come pick it up. And then there's some consequences as well. ISS is typically what goes on. Parent support, just like everyone else, you hear a lot of things outside through social media and everything else, but it doesn't come to me. I believe I had maybe three or four parents that spoke to me specifically about this. And when we had conversations, I was able to ease their concern with the pouch itself. Knowing that the kid has their phone on their body all day, either in the bookbag or in their back pocket or something like that, just in the pouch, helped a little bit with that. But then also, understanding that we have processes in place for those emergency circumstances that Ms. Sullivan was speaking about, to where we want the right people in the building at the right time. And so when we, if we have an emergency, having our emergency services people being able to come in without there being a lot of other people around so that they can do their job immediately, and we can get kids to parents, we can make sure the parents are aware, we do all those things without the cellphone so that they're, they understand where we are in those kind of situations. And there are, there are processes for that at every school. The student perspective, if you were to ask a group of high school students, every single one of them would tell you that they hate it. But when you talk to kids one-on-one, they start to open up and tell you that they understand why. Our student advisory board, the, one of our students, told us that after two weeks, it was just what it was. It was no longer a big deal the first two weeks. They go through that withdrawal symptom of not being able to pull their phone out. And then, after that, it becomes the new norm, and everything's fine. What I will tell you is, from day one, the difference between device use from the day before to the day of was night and day. Walking down the hallways, there's no earbuds, there's no headphones, there's no cellphones out. In the classroom, there's no cellphones out. Teachers don't have to constantly stop class time. They can teach because they're not there. And the kids are able to follow the directives. They're able to socialize more and be a better student. So discipline, they spoke about cellphones. I wanted to talk about some other things with that. So before the implementation, major discipline referrals were around five. After implementation, it dropped down one a day. So we went from five to four. A total reduction of a hundred and sixty discipline referrals from the time that we implemented to when it wasn't. What I felt was more important than giving you cellphone stuff was the things that I think stemmed from the cellphones. So for us, with insubordination, disrespect, disruptive behavior, a lot of those things came from the cellphone. I've got my cellphone out, I'm told to put it up, I'm going to argue. I'm being asked to give my cellphone up because it's not supposed to be out, it's not supposed to be seen or heard, and then I create this disruptive behavior. So you can see that after the implementation, both of those types of behaviors dropped. And so teachers were able to spend more time on teaching in the classroom. Kids were able to learn more because there wasn't that disruptive behavior. There wasn't that insubordination when asking them to comply with the cellphone policy. And then, what have we seen? Improved social interaction. Two weeks in, in the cafeteria, kids were bringing cards to school and playing, playing cards. Now, we had to make sure no money was being, being transacted, but they were, they were playing cards, they were talking. There was a much clearer back and forth between the kids in the hallways and in the cafeteria, those unsupervised, less structured times. Clear expectations, again, the tool, the resource allowed for those clear expectations to where kids really didn't have a, an argument. If the phone was out, we know it's not in the pouch, you're not in compliance, we've got to go. And then, the students, like Ms. Sullivan said, when kids come in, if you ask them, they've been grounded, right? The kids, we've got good kids, but apparently, as soon as those pouches came in, everybody got grounded for like life. Because when you would ask, hey, where's your pouch? Oh, I got it right here. Where's your phone? I got grounded, they took my phone, I don't have it. Those are kind of things that, okay, I feel like you're probably not telling me the truth, but that kid never had their phone out. We never saw the phone out. We never saw the headphones in. And so they were complying with the directive of what we had of not seen, not heard. And so we're, you know, we're not going to sit there and search a kid for a phone. Where's your phone? It's in the car. Okay, thank you. Where's your phone? I'm grounded, it's taken away. Okay, thank you. But at the end of the day, they don't bring it out, which is the whole purpose of this pouch, the whole purpose of the policy, so that they are able to learn. And then, teacher satisfaction, I think, again, there has not been something that has been done in the middle of a school year that has caused as much of a positive impact with teachers, and then teacher-student relationships than this. Because that teacher's not having to be the judge and warden of the phones, they're able to teach, the kids know what the process is, they don't bring it out because they know what happens if they do. And so I think it is a, it has been great. I appreciate being given the opportunity to be one of the pilot schools. And I'm glad that we're moving in the direction that we are so that all of our students are able to get a better education. Any questions? All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, principals, for presenting on the yonder pouches this morning. As the superintendent has discussed, and we've kind of discussed with Yonder, there's no silver bullet here to kind of solve this issue, but you can certainly see that our principals have put the effort into doing that through collaboration. What we talked to our principals about at the last principals' meeting was consistency across the district when we do implement them in all of our middle and high schools. And so all of our middle schools should look the same, all of our high schools should look the same with regards to implementation so that there are no complaint, well, people are going to complain anyway, but so that there aren't as many complaints about the yonder pouches being in schools. And so we're hoping that those sessions this summer will kind of alleviate some of the tension that may be present when we start school back on August the thirteenth. But we feel very good about the fact that we have a good plan in place to support our students and their families in the building. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. And thank you, principals, for your excellent presentations. We greatly appreciate you appearing before us this morning, bringing us to good news. Moving along now to Item C, discussion items. And our first item here is the Harnett County Schools Turnover Report, and that will be Ms. Thompson.
Chairman Powell, members of the board, we come to you this morning to talk briefly about our 2025 teacher turnover report. I have mentioned our status in this region at a couple of meetings, but want to take a deeper dive into that. And I want to introduce some of the hardest working people in Harnett County, Mr. Greg Griffin, Michelle Van Cannon, Carol Blalock, Alicia Washington, Jessica Moss, and Shelby Cagna. And this morning, they're going to present to you a little deeper into this. But because of their hard work, I know we talked about this last time, our vacancies, but we are really kind of closing the gap there with our vacancies. I have high hopes for this school year. Their hard work, paired with the principal's hard work, I'm just really proud of the progress that we've been able to make. And I feel like that we'll be in a much better place in the fall because of this work. But these folks do a lot. They not only serve as a licensure expert in this district, they also help, help new teachers transition to the classroom. They do a tremendous amount of work around recruitment and around retention. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Griffin. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Powell, members of the board. I have the least anxiety I've ever had presenting attrition data to you, so that might be a good sign. I just want to clarify that the, the current data is for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. This is not data for the school year, the current school year that we're right now closing out. The state releases numbers from the previous year in the, in the early spring of each year, and then we take some time and tease it out to see what it looks like for our district. Ms. Cagna has prepared a graphic that she's given to y'all that has a little bit of information, especially on the back page, that may not be contained in the slides that I'm about to go over. But I do mostly bear good news today, so as Ms. Thompson has said, so that's, that's good. So I want to talk about the, the brand new state attrition rate for our district and explain what that number is. So if I'm a leader on the state level, that's the number I'm going to be concerned with the most because that number shows the percentage of teachers that the district is losing for the state. They're leaving us, and they're leaving education in North Carolina, at least seemingly. They might be going to another state, that's going to take in any military people that are transferred out and so forth. But we have improved upon that number because it used to be thirteen point seven percent. So we are definitely headed in the right direction. Okay? So then, the LEA attrition rate is going to bring in those teachers that have left us for another district or a charter school. So that number is going to be higher, of course. And, but on a state level, you know, I don't think they're as interested in that number because they're keeping them for the state. They're just going to a different LEA. But that number should be of interest to us for sure, as we watch teachers be trained up in the way that they should go here in Harnett and then go elsewhere to do good things. But that number is also getting better because it used to be twenty-one point eight percent. So we're headed in the right direction with that number as well. If you have a question, by the way, as we're sharing the data with you this morning, feel free to let us, and we'll do our best to see if we can try to answer it for you. The mobility rate is also going down. The new mobility rate is six point five percent. That number captures the teachers that left us for another LEA. So if you add the mobility rate with the state attrition rate for Harnett County schools, that will give you the LEA attrition rate. Okay? And so all of those numbers are going down. The recruitment rate reflects the percentage of number of teachers that were total attrition that we regained from another district. So that's going to show the teachers that are moving to us from other districts. And Ms. Van Cannon is going to talk a little bit about that in just a few minutes about where they're coming from, also where they're, which districts they're leaving us for, and where we're looking with that. Okay? So now I wanted to look at some trends over now. This is all of the North Carolina districts averaged together over the past few years. Okay? So as you can see, the, the state attrition rate, the attrition rate for all of the districts in North Carolina averaged together is down from last year. It went from eleven point four percent last year to nine point nine percent this year. That's a drop of one point five percent. We actually beat that here in Harnett County, so that's something that we can celebrate. Our drop was from thirteen point Our drop was from 13.7 to 11.10, so that's a difference of 2.6%. So definitely another celebration, we have lots of, of glows in this data set, I'm so glad to report. Now, the LEA attrition, sorry, that drop is even larger when we bring in the numbers that, that capture the teachers that left us to go to another LEA. It went from 21.8% to 17.6%, which is a difference of 4.2. So that is also definitely something that we are happy with right now. Before I pass the torch to my colleagues over here, did y'all have any questions about what I just shared? Okay, all right, thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Powell, members of the board. Thank you so much for allowing us to speak with you this morning. So, nope, there it goes, a sensitive little, little remote. So the, the, this is what Greg had mentioned a little bit earlier, the recruitment. And again, just highlighting what Greg had pointed out, this is from the 23-24 school year, so this does not reflect the current school year that we're in. And you can see the first column represents or reflects the numbers of teachers that we're getting from other districts. That's, that's the good news, right? And then the second column reflects the teachers that are leaving Harnett County to go to other districts, all right? And so what we pulled here are the big districts that we are seeing either a pull or a push from. And then in the final column, you can see the net gain or net loss, if it, if that is indeed the case. So you can see that the one district that we are gaining teachers from is Cumberland County. So we got more teachers from them than we lost to them. You can see that the big, I'm waiting for this five-second delay. Okay, well, the, the other slide must not have populated, that's okay. But you can see that the two areas that we are losing teachers from in larger amounts are Wake, we would almost expect that, and then charter schools. That was a little bit surprising to our, our group as we were looking at that. Questions about this before I move to the next one? Okay. So here you can see how Harnett County's attrition looks as compared to our other LEAs in the North Central District III, okay? This is our particular district that we are part of. And you can see that we're middle of the pack here, all right? Now, this is actually good news, especially when you look at where we were the previous year with the same, in the same cohort, okay? So we, in the previous year, were only doing better than Granville and Edgcombe County. Now you can see we're doing better than, more than that, okay? So we're, we're gaining ground here, which is good news. When you look at the Sandhills District, which is not really our district, but we have some neighboring districts that are in Sandhills, so that we wanted to highlight the Sandhills District Four. When you look at this group, we are also about middle of the pack here, and if you look at the previous year, y'all, we were dead last in this cohort the previous year. And so again, we are gaining ground in terms of our attrition rate. So good news to report for both districts. Okay, and I'm going to let Carol come speak.
Good morning, Chairman Powell, members of the board. So this is, these are our vacancies by subject and grade level, and as you can see, from 2022 all the way to 2024, our 40th day vacancies have trended, we are trending down, but staying kind of stable, so we're, you know, but we are gaining some growth there. If you look especially at our elementary positions, those are really trending down. We've gone from 43 down to 28, and I think there's a lot of, of reasons why that one is trending down. We tend to, with student teachers, we have a lot more elementary SP1, they are traditionally trained teachers coming into that area. And it's also from a residency standpoint, that is the, for our college graduates, that's probably the easiest one to qualify for as far as coursework, as far as having the relevant coursework that they need for that area. EC, we're a little concerned, that continues to trend upward in our vacancies. That is statewide, nationwide, a high vacancy area anyway, but we are, are trending toward having more vacancies in EC, and also in middle-grade core areas are, are showing some higher vacancies with the exception of science. We made some trends in a positive way in the science. And then high school has tended to stay steady. I will tell you with this data, though, it does not reflect our international recruiting, which we've done a lot more of, so I, we extremely expect that this will continue to trend in a positive way, because we are staffing EC classrooms and middle and grade, especially science and math, with our international staff, and they're doing a great job in those classrooms. Okay, the, this is our separation reasons, and you can see the largest chunk of this pie is leaving to go to another public school system. And this data is, is on your chart, if this is a little bit difficult to read, it is over on the right-hand side. And then other reasons, and those can be a variety of things, we, we don't know. Sometimes they just check other, and we don't necessarily know, but you can kind of see that most of them are, are leaving for either another district or something in their maybe personal life. Okay, so we had exit survey general data, we've shared this in the past, we had 55, 51 certified responses for the 23-24 school year, and it's an optional survey, and we know from our own experiences, sometimes we're more likely to fill out a survey if something we, we perceive as a negative experience sometimes. We're more likely, we go to a restaurant or something. So, but most of them indicated that they left Harnett County schools for family or personal reasons, and that can be attributed to a lot of our military families, you know, every few years they have a change of station and they leave us, and then the same number left for a better salary, and that, you know, kind of out of our hands. And then 25% retired, or they're relocating, so anyway. Any questions about any of this? Okay, and then we'll just leave you with some of our comments from the exit survey, and, and we'll see that not all of them had a nega, a lot of them had a very positive experience here, and they leave for reasons that are out of their control. Okay, that concludes our presentation, thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to present our attrition data. We are excited about the good news that we have here and ready to continue the hard work to continue to improve in this area, I hope, for great hiring this summer, so thank you.
I've got one question on the EC, on the EC, is that I can understand why, are they going back to other teaching positions or just leaving EC, just don't want to do it?
I think they tend to leave EC. I think there's a lot of things, it's, it's a very difficult job, there's a lot of differentiation, there's a lot of paperwork, a lot of accountability, and I, I think it's overwhelming for new teachers, and it's also very overwhelming for teachers that are coming in from an alternative path. It's, it's a lot to learn.
I can understand the reason for it, yes ma'am, thank you.
We don't have a lot of traditionally trained EC teachers as well, a lot of those vacancies are filled with residency teachers. So that's also, you know, traditionally trained, they kind of know what they're getting into. If they're residency, they have no idea.
And so we have increased population also in EC, and so we're having to hire more teachers. And, and later today, we're going to talk about maybe some solutions to help with that, a little bit, little drop at the time will help with that, so.
Are there other questions for Ms. Thompson or for the R and R team? Okay, thank you, Ms. Thompson, and thank you. Next, we have our athletics policy, homeschool student participation. Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, and thank you, Chairman Powell, members of the board. This policy actually kind of touches on three departments, Mr. White in student enrollment, Ms. Ferguson in curriculum, and myself for athletics, and so we've kind of collaborated here. We have an existing board policy, 3620, which addresses homeschool athletes and participation. What we're bringing here is just some specifics and an FAQ document for this. I probably get asked 10 to 12 times a year about homeschool participation in athletics, and most of the time their reason for wanting to duly enroll is athletics. And so some of the things we've had to navigate are, we're guiding that our board policy already mentions a half, a 50% enrollment, that's what our dual enrollment policy is. So we want to kind of convey to parents, in that 50%, you can't just come and take all elective classes, you need to take some core classes and some. We've defined what the half-day is, so we've defined for middle school students that a half-day would be three classes. And really, the big thing we want to define here is the timing of this. So for instance, had a family that was pursuing this in the January, February time range to participate in spring sports at the middle school level. Well, they would have then enrolled in our courses in February, which had been being instructed since August, and they would have been responsible for taking a state test at the end of the year where we did not provide their instruction for greater than 50% of the year. And so what we really want to codify here is that, you know, whether it be athletics or we've, we've had some ROTC interest in joining dual enrollment or other things, we need the timing of when they enroll to be at the beginning of those courses. So at the middle school in August, at the high school at a semester change. And so again, not really any changes to the policy, just asking for permission to kind of put this document out there to parents of, here's the procedure that we follow when you pursue dual enrollment. So certainly, Ms. Ferguson may have any, anything to add, but if you guys have questions about the specifics there, the other kind of caveat that does come up is, do you have to attend in your attendance area? And we do feel like that would be important, that you can't duly enroll across the county because you want to participate, for instance, let's say their baseball team is better, so you want to homeschool and drive across the county to participate. We, we think you need to do it in your attendance area if you want to pursue this, so. Questions, did you have for me?
Are there questions for Mr. Pearson?
Mr. Chairman, being that this is a discussion item and not an action item, can we put this on the consent agenda for next meeting?
I think so, yes.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense, give you guys time to look over.
Okay, so Ms. Johnson, if you'd add that for her next meeting? Okay, thank you, Mr. Pearson. Moving along now to action items, and our first action item today is review and consider approval of TA-to-teacher partnership with Campbell University and funding proposal. Ms. Thompson.
Chairman Powell, members of the board, you might remember a, a month or so ago, Ms. Van Cannon presented this proposal to you for this teacher assistance tuition reimbursement. And we're saying, we, Campbell has approached us about this a number of times, and they've wanted a pretty large cohort number, they've allowed us this time to have as few as five in the cohort, which we feel like we could manage. We are asking for approval for this. I don't think there should be any real cause to the district because there is a tuition reimbursement grant that we get from the state, that we feel like we could recoup our money from that, that we pay out to Campbell. So we're asking for permission to go ahead and start this, again, as a way to help with our EC teacher issue. We feel like this is a really better model because most of the time, folks that are TAs in our classrooms understand the load of an EC teacher better than someone from the outside, and so if they're willing to do this, it brings some experience to the role of knowing what's going on, experience in the district, and we hope to maybe in the future, these folks can be leaders and mentors. That's one of the things that we're seeing, that we don't have a lot of experienced EC teachers, so there's no one in the school to help lead them like there are in other positions, so this will help us create not only teachers, but a future cohort of leaders to help us with those EC teachers.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve all Harnett County schools being CEP, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
That's the wrong item.
Yeah, the TA-to-teacher partnership, number, number one.
Okay, yeah. Motion to approve this participation with Campbell for TAs, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion and a second, is there additional discussion? Hearing none, chairman votes aye.
Abate aye.
Gania aye.
Hearing no nay votes, the motion is approved. Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Next, we have review and consider approval of all Harnett County schools being CEP, community eligibility provision, and Mr. Pearson and Ms. Brown.
Thank you. Members of the board, as we discussed briefly at last, the last regular meeting, this was something that's been studied by Ms. Brown and her staff, and, you know, I think that overall we feel is a very positive thing. I, I do want to share with you that the numbers we've run, an increased participation of somewhere around 13% would essentially be a break-even for the district. If we did not have that increased participation, there would be some financial cost to the district, but Ms. Brown and her team have done such a good job managing resources that we do not have any concerns that we cannot carry that, that financial obligation for multiple years. We didn't want to go into this and, and only be able to cover it for a year. But we do believe increased participation will happen. The other thing I do want to share is that all of our calculations are based on current numbers within the USDA, and those are obviously subject to change at any time based on, you know, federal guidelines. And so if those numbers were to change and where qualifiers and multipliers were to, you know, significantly change, we may need to revisit this, but the revisitation of this would not be based on Harnett County schools' financial situation, we'd be based on changes to federal programming. And so do want to share that with you, that, that our goal is to enter into this for multiple years, but we certainly need to, to have a caveat that the federal government is making pretty rapid changes, and we need to just be ready for that. So certainly entertain any questions you have, but I think that this is something that is pretty favorable amongst our, our schools.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve all Harnett County schools being CEP as presented.
Have a motion and a second, is there further discussion? I have a couple of questions. First of all, approximately how many schools would be affected by this?
It would be all of them.
All schools.
Uh huh, yeah. Well, how many, how many are we moving from currently CEP to falls out, do you mean? Like, how many would be adding to the program?
Well, total, you know, how many adding, then how many in total would be? So it would be all schools?
Yes, it would be every, every one of our schools, yeah.
We're adding 10.
Oh, great, okay. And my second question is, will this be paid for primarily by grant money or?
So it's still all funded through reimbursement rates from USDA, so every child that goes through the line, we get a reimbursement, as of right now anyway, so we, they would all get the free rate, so it would help.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there additional questions? Hearing none, the chairman votes aye.
Abate aye.
Gania aye.
Hearing no nay votes, the motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have review and consider approval of standardized start times for all schools for the 2025-26 school year. Back to Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Chairman Powell. The agenda is rather lengthy for my part today, so thank y'all. Again, discussed this at the previous meeting, give you guys a chance to gather some feedback. You know, I, I think we acknowledge that change causes discomfort, and that there's certainly, you know, amongst families, whenever we, we propose these kind of changes, there is always a little pros and cons. I do want to, you know, should reiterate, as we've discussed and we shared at the last meeting, that this is no more than about a 15-minute change for most of our schools. We have about 12 elementary schools that this would be a 15-minute change, so it's not significant. I do know there was, you know, a little bit of public concern in like drop-off times and getting to work and those types of things. Our elementary schools are already starting after 8:00 AM, and so, you know, if you're a pre-8:00 AM workperson, this, this change doesn't really help you, you're already, we're already starting after that mark. Also, just kind of, you know, getting the pulse of those around us, for instance, you know, students that attend elementary school in the Fuqua area, they're a 9:15 start time. Students that attend elementary school in Benson are an 8:55 start time, so we're still significantly ahead of that. We would be a little later than Lee County schools, but kind of in the middle there. And then on the other end, the early start time is the other part we hear about, and this is a 10-minute change for high schools. So again, recognize that there is a, a little bit of discomfort with change, but we're not asking for significant, significant. not asking for significant, significant changes. I do have, I asked Ms. Sullivan and Mr. McNeil to stick around in case you wanted to get a principal's perspective on this change and the impact. I think the greatest thing for us is creating this pool of substitute bus drivers. Forty-four substitute bus drivers is significant. We have schools currently that when they have to use a double route substitute driver, those students are not arriving to campus till nine fifteen or nine thirty. That's a substantial impact on a student's education. And so again, while we know that discomfort exists with change, we feel like the pros outweigh the cons in this case, and certainly we feel like our principals are in support of it, you know, and our bus drivers are in support of it. But it's something that would, you know, as we said with Yonder, take a little while before it's the new normal, but we do feel like it would be a positive. So certainly think there may be some questions and happy to entertain those.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the standardized start times for all schools for 25-26 school years as presented.
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, this has been something that's been, in my personal opinion, needed for a long time. We were presented last year, I believe it was, last year or two years ago, with, I'd say a similar proposal, but quite different. And whereas that was a little too far outside of what we needed, I think this, again, on a personal level, I really like the staggered start time, and me personally, the times actually work better. But I've had a number of people reach out, and I mean, a large number, and where I really like this personally, I can't go against what, what folks have reached out to me and presented to me and their issues. So if I was voting for myself, I would absolutely vote for it, but for the record, and when we vote momentarily, I will vote against it.
Okay. Is there additional discussion or questions? Ms. Gaines.
I'd just like to ask, principals, do you have any comments you want to make about this? And I'm just the opposite from Mr. Abate. The few emails that I received were positive, but everything that I've read in social media, of course, was negative. But what came to me was positive. So if you have anything, you can share with us.
I would, I would say that the conversations that we've had is individual people speak from their individual point of view. And I think as the principals had the conversation, at some point, you have to do what's best for the district and the students overall. And if we have forty-four bus routes that can be eliminated and allow our APs less stress in trying to cover subs, I know personally, my head custodian will drive two and three routes a day. I know regularly, I get, my son is at Western High School, calls that the bus will be sixteen minutes, ninety minutes late. So while I understand individual families and perspectives that they may have, you will adjust and you will figure it out, and the schools will work with you. And those times are tardy bells. So schools often open twenty to thirty minutes prior to those, but I just feel like something has to be done about the busing issue because it's not going to get better right now, especially with increasing enrollment. I just think that's what will help. I think it will improve the quality of our drivers as well, having a pool of people to pull from. So that's my personal. Thank you.
And I agree with, with Ms. Sullivan and what Mr. Pearson has presented. The, the forty-four bus routes that we're able to kind of consolidate, do whatever it is, that creates that pool for us to where, when a bus driver is out, we've got somebody in the building or somebody that we can call on that we know is going to be available to where these kids can get to school on time. And for us, ten minutes, you know, starting at seven twenty instead of seven thirty, opening the doors, you know, a few minutes earlier so that the kids can get in and get their breakfast and do all the things they need to do, is something that I'm willing to do, that I would believe that all principals would be willing to do to make sure that we can get the school, the kids to school on time. And I think that's the, with this, that allows a little bit more flexibility with that. And so I'm all for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would add, I appreciate both of them sharing, all of our schools, this is the tardy bell time. And so all of our schools work with families for, when do we open our doors? Most of our carpool lines start significantly before our tardy bell. So I think that would also lessen the impact some, and something our schools may have to be flexible on in relation to, you know, parents and.
And we have a number of complaints that come through Courtney's office about late buses, a number of complaints that she gets on a regular basis.
And I will say, for my part, I resonate with Mr. Harris' motion on these times. I'll tell Mr. McNeil, Ms. Sullivan, most of the comments I've had have been positive about this time, very few negative, you know, because of the busing situations. Anything to take care of helping us with the busing situations.
Is there additional discussion? Chairman votes aye.
Abate, no.
Gani, aye.
God, for aye.
A vote of four to one, the motion is approved. Next, we have review and consider selection of the firm for special inspections and testings, testing at the Flatwoods Middle School Project. Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Gani, Chairman Powell, members of the board. This is approval of a, essentially looking at as a third party to monitor our construction and oversee some specialized testing to make sure all that the construction is meeting standards. We actually had entered into negotiations with a different vendor and were very unsatisfied with the prices we were getting, so entered negotiations with this vendor and got a price that was almost half, about sixty percent of the other one. So feel very good about this, and we have worked with this vendor. They're actually currently our special inspections group on the Lowington Shawtown gym and have offices out of Dunn, so very accessible to us. So recommend this approval.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Building and Earth Sciences LLP as presented.
Have a motion and a second. Is there additional discussion? Chairman votes aye.
Abate, aye.
Gani, aye.
God, for aye.
The motion is approved. Next, we have review and consider Pearson Virtual Schools platform for Harnett Virtual Academy K-5. And that is Mr. White, who has stepped out. Is there someone else who?
I can.
Ms. Ferguson.
Chairman Powell, I can speak on behalf of Pearson. We have used Pearson this year.
Yes, ma'am.
Next year, he would like just to use it in the K-5. Our parents are used to it, the students are used to it. It has worked well this year. I think he has some long-term goals and plans, but it's not a new program that we're using. It's not a new platform. It's something we are currently using.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Pearson Virtual School platform of Harnett County Virtual Academy as presented, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second. Is there additional discussion?
Do we have to have virtual schools?
I will, I'll kind of weigh into that. We have some, some students who are medically fragile, where this provides an option for them to be able to continue and be students of Harnett County Schools. We also have some situations in which there are, and maybe some behavioral issues, which also lend itself to having that option. I do think we still have a few that are choosing that option from our pandemic time, but that number has dwindled to some extent. So will this ever morph into some huge amount of students? I don't see that in the near future, but I do think it provides a viable option for a number of our, or not a number, but some of our students so that we can continue to serve them through our school system.
Thank you.
Anything else? Chairman votes aye.
Abate, aye.
Gani, aye.
Hearing no nay votes, the motion is approved. Next, we have review and consider Board of Education members attending the 2025 COSPA Federal Advocacy Conference in Washington, DC. Mr. Matthews.
Chairman Powell, members of the board, this is a, we have a couple of our board members who have requested to be able to attend the COSPA Federal Advocacy Conference in Washington, Mr. Abate and Ms. Gani. And as you know, out of state, participation in events such as this requires board approval, so I just bring this to you to approve their attendance at this conference. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve members to attend the COSPA 2025 Federal Advocacy Conference in Washington, DC as presented.
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Chairman votes aye.
Abate, aye.
Gani, aye.
Hearing no nay votes, the motion is approved. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-31811, A1, A3, and A6, to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel files under GS 115-C321, to consider matters relating to initial employment of an individual employee, and to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege.
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, the chairman votes aye.
Abate, aye.
Gani, aye.
The motion is approved. We're now in closed session.
Following a motion and a second, we are now reconvened in the open session. Mr. Matthews, any action from the closed session we need to take at this time?
Yes, Chairman Powell, members of the board, I would like to recommend the approval of Leslie Durnert as Assistant Principal at Coach Elementary School for the 25-26 school year.
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to the recommendation, I move to approve Leslie D as presented for Coach Elementary.
Have a motion and a second, personnel matter, chairman votes aye.
Abate, aye.
Gani, aye.
The motion is approved.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to recommend the teacher contract list as presented in closed session be approved.
I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve this list, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion and a second, personnel matter, chairman votes aye.
Abate abstains due to conflict.
Gani, aye.
The motion is approved.
And I would also like to recommend approval of the one-year principal contract extension as was discussed in closed session.
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to the recommendation?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, personnel matter, chairman votes aye.
Abate, aye.
Gani, aye.
Motion is approved.
That concludes mine, Mr. Powell.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews, I'll entertain a motion. Have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye please?